Call this meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, this is Porter County Board of Commissioners meeting on Tuesday, February 26th. We're going to go right into the consent agenda, so we have approval of payroll for February 8th and February 26th of this year, approval of minutes, January 15th and January 29th of this year, and approval of claims for February 7th, February 15th, February 21st of this year. We also have the Memorial Opera House, we have some artistic services agreements with Stephen Sinecki, Brian Schaefer, Bryce Schaefer, Sharon Shepherd, Madeline Woodruff Heaton, Don Parker Adams Radio Group, Jared Coller, and then we have a venue rental agreement with Rob Harco from Brightside Music Concert Series, open that up to the floor on a consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion, second, for consent agenda, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move right into the commissioners. We have an amendment on ordinance 96-4 and 10 and 14-07, this is the Frost Law, second reading. Rich, you can just stay back there. We did first reading at our last meeting for public comment, this is just the second reading now, so I'll open it up to the floor.
I made just a very few minor revisions under the section four, paragraph three, I added that the revenues collected in the positive shall be utilized for traffic safety as well as improvement and maintenance of county roads and shall not be utilized for any other purpose, the "not" was added. And then also I added in the exemption, emergency and ambulance vehicles, public utility vehicles, and fuel delivery, heating, oil, and diesel vehicles.
They're exempted.
They're exempted.
School buses?
School buses was in their original letter.
Yes.
And garbage trucks.
Motion to approve, what do you change on?
Second. We have a motion, second, for an amendment, ordinance 96-4 and 14-07 for the Frost Law, amendments, second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move to animal control and animal shelter services contract with Porter, Indiana. I think that was for going forward for the next two years, I believe.
Three.
Three years. I think we have a lot of the other ones we've approved, so this is for the town of Porter.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for the animal control and animal shelter services contract with Porter, Indiana, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out that, you know, Toni has submitted her 2018 annual report, I just wanted to thank you, very, very good, informative. Oh, you're going to, okay.
She's on the agenda.
Yep. So now we're going to move to Huntington Bank, this is a lease purchase agreement for the county, if you've been to the last several meetings, the county has procured a Vector truck, a new Vector truck for the county to be shared with stormwater management and the highway department, and this is now the lease purchase portion of the agreement that we need to approve to finalize that contract and that purchase. So I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for a lease purchase agreement for the Vector truck, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have Skilman Corporation, North County Annex. First on this, this is an agreement to lower the nine-way duct bank to make way for new 36-inch storm sewer and raise existing FTR cable with Frontier, you want to just give us a little brief synopsis of that, I think I know where this is at.
Sure, on the North County project, there's a Frontier building, and they have existing cables that feed Wheeler, I mean, it's their main trunk lines. The new storm sewer was right dead center with those lines, so we explored various options as far as how to correct the issue with some conflict structures in the field, or we reached out, and we reached out to all the utility companies to move their lines, which there is a cost associated with that, and going through the process, this ends up being a lot cheaper than the proposed solutions that we had to price out and possibly utilize. So this by far saves tremendous amount of money.
And Don, Don Wellsen, have you reviewed all that for where, I think we just had one conduit, right?
Yeah, he has, NIPCO got theirs out of the way for us, and then we also had NIPS go in the way, and they moved theirs for us, too.
Okay, okay.
So this is the last piece of getting everybody out of the way so we can, they can continue.
Yeah, I forwarded, just so you know, I forwarded that set of drawings to Don at IT, and he now has a set, so as we continue to put our conduits in out there, we're going to continue to mark that up, so we actually have a, you know, at the end of the day, we want to have a good set of ASB builds.
Sure.
As to where everything's at.
Yep.
On that site, so we're not digging it up in the future, so I know we wanted to coordinate that, so thank you.
Yep.
What type of savings were we going to see on this versus where we were at?
Ninety, seventeen. Saved about seventy grand.
Seventy grand?
Mm-hmm.
Savings?
Savings, well, it's money you didn't have to spend.
Oh, it's money we didn't have to spend, right?
Yes.
Okay. Good point. Okay, so I'll open it up to the floor, any other questions, Derek, why he's here?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, second, just to point out that when we started up there, there were a lot of things that we had to coordinate through from utilities, there's a lot of things that go through that land up there, but I think we're hitting there, so that was quite a task. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move into the pay apps, and most of you that have been coming to the meetings lately, this is the interesting section of what we, part of what we're doing on this capital improvement plan, so we'll be going through pay applications by contractor as we're buying this project out by contract. So first one is pay app five, this is EMCOR, Higher Electric, and this is for the courthouse renovation, the downtown courthouse renovation, and this is the pay app for thirteen thousand eighty-seven dollars, forty-eight cents, and with a balance to finish of seventy thousand three hundred forty-three thousand and ninety-seven cents, it's pay app five for Higher.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, second, for pay app five for Higher Electric for the courthouse renovation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up is Gareet Construction, this is pay app number four, and this is in the amount of one hundred sixteen thousand eight hundred and two dollars and fifty cents, general trades for the courthouse renovation. I'll open it up to the floor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for pay app number four, in the amount of one sixteen eight oh two fifty, for general trades for the courthouse, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now please keep in mind, all these numbers that we're going through, they are budgeted numbers, they are not additional, these are part of the contract as we're building through it, so these are not additional costs, these are budgeted numbers. Gatlin Plumbing and Heating, this is pay app number two, in the amount of twenty-two thousand three dollars and ninety cents, this is bid category ten for the courthouse renovation, so we're still on the courthouse.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Gatlin Plumbing, pay app number two, for twenty-two thousand three dollars and ninety cents, all of those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We're still staying at the historic courthouse, this is pay app number three, in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars for Midwest Tile and Interiors for flooring, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Midwest Tile and Interiors for pay app number three, in the amount of twelve thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We have pay app number two for Midwest Tile and Interiors, and this is for the Expo Center renovation, and this is for fifty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-three dollars and eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay app two for the Expo Center project, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Midwest Tile and Interiors, this is pay app three, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty-four dollars and sixty-five cents, this is bid category number four for flooring, again, for the Expo Center, a lot of floor out there, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Midwest Tile and Interiors, pay app three for the Expo Center flooring, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Zokowski Construction, this is pay app number one, in the amount of a hundred thousand seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents, this is bid category number two, and this is for masonry on the North Annex Portage Project.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Zokowski Construction, pay app number one, in the amount of a hundred thousand seventy-eight dollars and seventy cents for masonry, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next, Pangier Corporation, this is back to the Expo Center, this is a change order number one, in the amount of eighty thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars for new doors for the Expo Center renovation, what are those doors for, Derek?
That's a typo, that's for alternates one and two, the upgraded finishes in Expo East and Expo.
Oh, this, that's for Expo East upgrades, okay, so we're just now getting to that, huh? It seems like we made the decision a long time ago.
Yep.
All right. Change order number one, eighty thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars, and that is for the Expo East finishes upgrades, so I'll open it up to the floor.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, for change order number one, in the amount of eighty thousand one hundred seventy-nine dollars, this is for the Expo East upgrade and finishes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Pangier Corp., change order number one, in the amount of fifty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars, and this is for laminate existing walls with drywall for Expo Center renovation, what's that for?
That also is, this is for the bid category three, part of the alternates one and two acceptance, and then also included in that change is laminate some existing walls in the patio room, so when we removed the drywall or the wall covering, there was two layers on there, and it just peeled off all the drywall.
Right.
So we just skimmed over with.
Right.
The drywall.
All right, so this is bid pack.
Three.
Which was, and the last one we did was bid pack.
Bid category.
Bid category.
One.
Bid category one on the first one.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second.
This is three.
Three.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, for change order number one, for laminate existing walls with drywall in the Expo Center, and that's for fifty-two thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Pangier Corp., this is change order number two, in the amount of, again, for Expo, in the amount of twenty-four thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars, fire protection revisions for the Expo Center, you want to give us a little, I know there was much discussion about this.
Yeah, the system up there was fairly old, when we started taking it apart to relocate, we found it was filled with debris and just soot, so we had them re-flush the entire system. There were some modifications we made in the link, since now that area is going to be heated, and there were some options as far as making it a dry system, or, so we made it stay with the dry system, but we did some upgrades, and we had to reconfigure some older heads that aren't code anymore, so there was quite a few fire protection items that we addressed.
And that had, was that part to do with that stand pipe system there in the Expo East area in that closet and all that?
Part of that is upgrading that as well.
Okay, just want to make sure that was included.
Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for change order number two, for twenty-four thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars for fire protection upgrades, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Number sixteen is Pangier Corp., again, on Expo, this is pay app number four, it's not a change order, this is the pay app, in the amount of sixty-seven thousand seven hundred sixty-nine dollars and twenty cents for general trades.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for pay app four, for Pangier Corp. at the Expo, sixty-seven thousand seven sixty-nine twenty, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. We will skip over seventeen and move right to eighteen, again, pay app six for Pangier, in the amount of seventy-two thousand forty-six dollars, ten cents, and this is general trades for Pangier.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for pay app six, for seventy-two forty-six ten, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Nineteen, Pangier, again, pay app four, in the amount of sixty-five nine fifty-nine forty-five for metal studs and drywall, acoustical ceilings in the Expo Center, and, open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for pay app number four, in the amount of sixty-five nine fifty-nine forty-five, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. If you notice on the, on the board up there, you'll see balance to finish, what that balance to finish means, that's the contract line, so we're taking this dollar amount out, and then there's still a balance to finish that's contracted for, so when you see that balance to finish, that's what's left on the contract, just want to give you a little heads up there. Pangier Corp., number twenty, we're going to skip over twenty, we're going to go to twenty-one, Pangier Corp., pay app six, thirty-one thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars, fifty cents, this is metal studs and drywall again for Expo.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for Pangier, pay app six, thirty-one six six three fifty, metal studs and drywall, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to move to still Expo, this is DA Dodd, DA Dodd is the mechanical contractor for the building, change order number one, is for forty thousand six hundred seventy-one, and provide new concrete pads for RTUs for Expo, is that for the whole amount?
No, there's part of the other change included in that is the existing return ducts on each side of the main hall, the liner was full of, it was just old and dirty, and so we replaced all that duct work as well to clean it up.
That's pretty big duct work.
Yeah.
A lot of big duct work.
Yep.
And the pads are where, we brought new big makeup air units, and these things are huge, and they needed to be put on real stable pads, and these pads are very large, then we'll be fencing all that area in, so from an aesthetic standpoint, it'll look pretty well, too, so, if you're interested, if you're at all interested. So we have change order number one for forty thousand six seventy-one.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for DA Dodd, change order one, forty thousand six seventy-one for new concrete pads and new makeup air duct work, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. DA Dodd, again, this is a regular pay app, in the amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and forty cents, mechanical for the Expo Center, looks like we're starting to pay on some of the bigger equipment and stuff, because it's starting to come in, so that's what that's for.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for DA Dodd, pay app four, in the amount of three hundred seventy-five thousand one hundred sixty-six dollars and forty cents for mechanical work, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next up, DA Dodd, pay app five, in the amount of eighty-four six fourteen and ninety-three cents, and this is again for mechanical work, this is the next pay app, so it looks like our meeting got, we got caught up in between two pay app periods, right, so we're paying an old one and then the current one.
Motion to approve.
Yep, second. We have a motion, a second, for pay app five, eighty-four thousand six fourteen ninety-three, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. And last one for DA Dodd, pay app six, in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and seventy cents, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, no, we got a, we got a motion, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second. I'm on tape. I'm going to take a break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Let me take a breath here. I'm in pay app heaven here. This is transparency at its best here, trust me, I'll lose my voice on it. Continental Electric, again, we're back at the Expo Center, and by the way, we're getting real close to being done out there. Change order number one.
At the Expo Center.
At the Expo Center. Yeah, right now, I'm taking.
Just beating me.
Change order number one, which we approved a long time ago, this is for a hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred ninety-five dollars for electrical upgrades, just to let everybody know, when we first busted and got into the Expo Center, all of the electrical feeds for that, most of that building was all underground, and when we started digging it up and getting into the floor, it was all just, pretty much, it just pretty much fallen apart, you couldn't even use it, couldn't even use the conduits, so this is, there's a lot of work put into this to value engineer and get it done right, and so now we'll have all new gear, we'll have all new electrical runs, everything is up overhead, so it's not under the floor anymore so we can get to it, so it should make the building last a lot longer, too, so it was a big dollar amount, but it was the right thing to do to protect the longevity of the building, so just wanted to give you a little history lesson in the Expo Center there, so I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, change order number one for the, all the electrical upgrades out at the Expo Center, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Next, Continental Electric, pay app four, seventy-seven thousand five thirty-seven fifty-four, and this is for their electric contract, with a balance to finish of six hundred and thirteen thousand six twenty-three thirty-one.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for pay app four for Continental Electric for the Expo, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Continental Electric, pay app five, for seventy-five thousand one oh five, just so you know, each pay app represents thirty days billing, so they're not just putting them in one after another, it's thirty days, and then the next one comes in thirty days, this, for electrical seventy-five one oh five seventy-four, pay app five, I'll open it up to the floor.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second, for pay app five for Continental at the Expo, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Pay app six.
Motion to approve.
Second. For one seventeen one thirty-five, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. KEO Mechanical, and this is change order number two, in the amount of sixteen thousand five hundred and nine dollars, what are those alternates for there, Derek?
Alternates one and two are for the finishes in Expo East restrooms, so they had to take, the original plan was to take toilets off and put them back on, and also, this change also includes replacing the existing toilet fixtures in Expo West main bathrooms.
Right. So when we first started the renovation, our goal was to keep the existing toilets that were there, we thought that they could make it through, and when we started taking them off and getting ready for the renovation, it was very obvious that they were cracked, falling apart, so this was something that we thought we were going to try to use the existing toilets and everything there, because they were, from an appearance standpoint, they looked like they were in good shape, but once we started getting into them, they weren't in very good shape, we would have just been chasing our tail for a long time, so, and these bathrooms will have high demand, high usage, so they really need to be working, so that's what that's for.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion, a second, for change order two, for new toilets in Expo and Expo East, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Change order number three, in the amount of sixty-five, six thousand five hundred fifty-nine dollars, why don't you give a stat update, too, Derek, I know that was much discussed as well?
Yep, there's actually two changes in this change order as well, one is, again, is replacing the fixtures in Expo East, we ran into the same concept, again, those toilets were not in good shape, and the flooring that was going to go in there was an epoxy-type flooring, it was just a patch, wasn't really a brand-new floor system, so we evaluated that, got some pricing to replace it with epoxy, and then we reviewed some options with some LVT-type flooring, so in order to put either one of those in, we had to modify the existing floor drains a little bit to raise them up a quarter inch, so that flooring would butt right to them and make it look right.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for KEO Mechanical, change order number three for Expo East, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. You know Lori Daly's in the back there, and we're spending a lot of money on her facility here, so I just wanted to recognize her while she's in the room here to make sure that she understands that this applies to her and her facility, so that was just a way to break up this monotony here, so, you're welcome, Lori. What'd you say?
No.
Pay app number two for KEO Mechanical, in the amount of sixteen thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars and fifty cents, with a balance to finish of twenty-six thousand two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, for KEO Mechanical, pay app two, at the Expo Center renovation, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. Pay app number three, last one.
And it's Expo again.
And it's Expo again. Pay app number three, in the amount of sixteen thousand one twenty-eight fifty-two for the Expo Center, twenty-six thousand five ninety-three eighty-one to finish.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries.
We should probably point out that Lori has paid her dues in her trailer in the coldest winter on record.
Little high winds, little high winds.
At least you weren't in it.
Just as, since we just went through all that, for everyone that's keeping track, Expo is probably going to be opening right around the end of April, first of May, that's when we're shooting for being open out there, so we're on the last, we're on the last run here, work is going rather quickly, the place looks phenomenal, I know we've been putting some sneak peek pictures out there, but I think everybody's going to be real impressed with what we ended up with, so. Next up, we got Sheriff Rentals, and this is establishing a new fund, establishing a new fund to deposit the income for Portage Township Schools, this is second reading. This is the new fund for Sheriff Rentals, second reading.
Motion to approve the new fund, a second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to establish a new fund to deposit the income from Portage Township Schools, this is second reading, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries. This is another reading, second reading, this establishes a new fund for the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation.
Motion to approve the new fund for the Indiana Virtual Education Foundation on second reading.
Second. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, motion carries, you got your funds, thanks, Sheriff. Expo Center, Lori Daly.
All roads lead to Expo.
Sorry to take a long meeting here. Just spending money.
Just wait until more county comes around.
Yep. Uh. Yes. So what we have here is we have, uh, some quotes, uh, for the, the south side of the, uh, I think is it, this is south side of Ex, this is between Expo and Expo East, right?
Yeah, so on the south side of the link where the maintenance day is to redo the fencing along there, and then on the north side around the HVAC unit.
Yep.
So the three quotes.
So this, these will screen those big makeup air units that we're putting on the ground out there, so if you're out there walking around, you won't see them. And low bid, who's your recommended, uh?
Wonder.
And Wonder has done a lot of work out there. They've done wonders out there.
Yeah.
So, uh...
Motion to approve, Wonder with the lowest quote at ninety-seven hundred dollars.
Second. We have a motion in a second for ninety-seven hundred dollars to Wonder Company for the new fence, uh, that will, uh, surround all of our maintenance, uh, equipment out there. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign, motion carries. And then what do you got next for us?
Uh, next is the oven, uh, the convection oven for the kitchen. That's the one piece of, we're replacing two large pieces of equipment. The second one will be the dish machine, which we'll revisit next month. Um, but the convection oven is, is, the guy said I can't fix it anymore. So these are the quotes, um, I'm suggesting Kitchen Monkey be, is, uh, what, a hundred dollars more? But the oven space is bigger, and then there's more racks, and it actually has a two-year warranty as opposed to Webster's.
Motion to approve the Kitchen Monkey double deck convection oven at four thousand six hundred ninety-six dollars.
Second. 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 Oh, do you say second? I didn't hear, okay. Sorry. Um, we have a motion, we have two seconds. We have two seconds.
We got a third.
A third. Uh, all those in favor for Kitchen Monkey, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. The Kitchen Monkey thing threw me off. I said Kitchen Monkey, and then I just lost it. Oh, I'm gonna take a drink of water. Okay, next up is, uh, thank you, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
I think Expo does.
Yeah, finally.
We're broke now.
Uh, Tony, how you doing?
I'm good, how are you all?
Great.
Did I mention I like your report?
Yes, thank you.
I don't really, I have to.
Just, you said, yeah.
Thank you.
I should. Okay, first, I would like to thank the commissioners for allowing us to bring this report to you and make it public for everybody to see how well we're doing at the new shelter this year. Um, I also want to thank Kurt for all of his effort in putting together the annual report as well as the presentation for us. So, um, let's get started. Um, two thousand eighteen was an amazing year for Portage County Animal Shelter. Um, it was our first year, uh, first full year at the new shelter. Um, we have our increased staffing, appropriately staffed and dedicated professional employees working with us. Um, it's also our first year of having animal control back under the shelter, and it's our first year, first, first full year of accepting animals from Portage.
Has it been the entire year for the animal control, or are we that?
Yes. Um, animal control came to us in, um, May of seventeen, I believe.
I'm glad.
And you know what, what I noticed, there, I have not, I can't speak for the other two, but I have not received one complaint on the animal control, um, you know, as to where it was before you took it over.
Yes, they, uh, we, we keep a pretty close watch on everything that's going on there, um, and they seem to be doing just a better job of being able to handle a lot of the calls, sometimes outgoing out and just talking to people on the phone instead of having to, you know, run out to a site, which is certainly better for us as far as our resources go, so. So these three, these four improvements really have been instrumental in, um, giving us our first really successful year at the shelter, in, in our new shelter, too. Um, our total intakes for the year were eight hundred and forty animals, as opposed to two thousand sixteen, where we had eight hundred and two animals. Um, that's an increase of only thirty-eight animals, even though we brought in an additional one hundred and fifty-four animals from Portage. So our, um, intakes kind of stabilized, they, they stabilized in this area of over the last few years, um, even though we have added Portage. So we're still doing a better job. Owner surrender intakes, um, this year we had a hundred and twenty-two, in two thousand sixteen we had fifty-seven. Um, the new shelter and the larger capacity certainly made it easier for us to take in more owner surrenders. So that helps a lot. It helps also, I think, to keep animals from coming in as stray, because we're actually taking them from the people before they decide they just can't deal with it anymore and turn it loose, so.
Are, are we required, are they required to, when they bring their animal in, they decide they don't want it anymore? Do they, what do they pay us for it?
Uh, they don't.
Wow.
They don't pay us.
How nice.
We are not.
But they need to be residents of Portage County.
Yeah, they have to be residents of Portage County, um, and it's, we're usually looking at it being an animal that is adoptable. Um, I don't take in animals that have repeatedly bitten people or, you know, are seriously aggressive to her. We don't think we can deal with the problems that the animal has. So we are, you know, we do screen those animals coming in, um, and we make sure that they are something that we're gonna be able to adopt up, or at least work with, with the idea that we'll be able to adopt them out eventually. So stray intakes, um, in two thousand sixteen we had seven hundred and six, in two thousand eighteen we have six hundred and two. Again, we, we think that helps because we're taking in more of the owner surrenders, so our numbers are dropping in that respect, so, always good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, we also consider, um, our animal control officers being a big key in making sure our stray intakes are less. They're actually doing a better job in the field of finding that animal's home before it actually gets to the shelter. So if they go out, um, it's in the neighborhood, they pick up a dog, even if it doesn't have a tag, they'll go house to house and look for the owner of that animal before they put it on the truck and bring it in.
Smart.
It just saves us so much time.
And money for our shop.
And money, yeah. It does for the shops and just, you know, resources for the shelter and everything, so. Um, our Lost and Hound Facebook page is phenomenal as far as reuniting owners and dogs and cats, um, dogs, but, um, we do a lot, um, we, I'm not sure of how many followers, twelve?
About thirteen thousand.
About thirteen thousand followers on that page. So we put an animal up there, it probably shares, you know, thousands of times, right?
One post last year reached a hundred and seventy dollars in Facebook.
Right, so...
That was the one that was on the train.
Oh, the dog from Fort Wayne?
Yes, yeah. So Facebook page is awesome. It really does help a lot, and it gets the, the dog out there or the cat, and it gets it returned back to the owner much better. Okay, our outcomes, um, total outcomes for two thousand eighteen were eight hundred and ninety, um, and two thousand sixteen it was eight twenty-six. An eight percent increase, um, over the, the span of time.
Outcomes are dogs adopted out.
Dogs adopted out, transferred to rescue, um, pretty much all of those, returned to owners and/or euthanized. Okay, we're gonna cover all of those in this section here. Our transfers to rescues are reduced significantly. Um, in two, in two thousand eighteen, we went from two thousand sixteen of a hundred and eighty-four to two thousand eighteen of ninety-eight. Uh, that's twenty-five percent to eleven percent, so we're not transferring as many animals out to rescues any longer. Um, there's a couple of reasons for that. The larger space, of course, at the new shelter, making it more conducive for us to keep the animals longer. Um, we're also doing a little more behavior modification with our animals, cats and dogs, and trying to get them, um, adopted out ourselves, instead of sending them to a rescue where they would be doing that rehabilitation for the animal. Return to owners, um, it's pretty consistent. It stays in the twenty-five to thirty percent range. Um, in two thousand fifteen we had two hundred and fifty-five returned to the owner, in two thousand eighteen we had two hundred and forty-six. It's still a very good number of animals that are going back to their owners once they get to the shelter, so it's very happy with that. Adoptions, and this is, this is phenomenal, okay? We achieved our highest adoption rate ever, um, with five hundred and two adoptions in two thousand eighteen, which is fifty-six point four percent of our total outcomes of eight hundred and ninety. More than fifty percent of our animals are getting adopted out.
And I, I'd like to make a comment here, because it sort of goes back to our animal control. Um, you know, animal control, I think a lot of people think that animal control is just the guys that go out and pick up the animals and bring them back to the shelter. But because of, of Tony's leadership and, uh, sort of the change in some of the, the people out there in animal control, uh, they're doing a lot more than just that. They're working with these dogs when they come in. So if you go by in the summer by the Expo and by the, the shelter, it won't be odd for you to see out in the big parking lot at the Expo Center, uh, our, our, our animal control people working with these dogs and running with them and teaching them and training them. And that's very important to be able to adopt them back out. They, they have to have a progression to, to go through everything, so, um, that, that, that's sort of the untold success, one of, one of the untold success stories of this adoption rate, and I know I'm tickled to death, and I think the guys are too, because they're doing more than, if they truly love animals, they're doing more than just putting them in a truck and picking them in. We're taking them and we're, we're, we're helping them learn, uh, you know, all the things that they need to learn to be adopted out, so it's, it's good stuff.
Yeah, animal control has really stepped up since they came back under the shelter in helping us, um, working with dogs, taking dogs for life. You can walk back to the animal control office, and I guarantee you there's a dog sitting in their office, and they're just spoiling for the day, so. And it's always, it's constant.
Yep.
Before, it was a little bit of a challenge getting there, but, um, they really stepped up and did a great job.
Yep.
Very happy with that. Okay, so our adoption rates are up because we have a better trained staff, um, we have more staff, which also helps, and our staff has been trained to identify and work with behavioral issues. Um, they spend more time socializing and modifying the behavior issues. As you can see in the little picture there, we have one of our volunteers teaching the cat how to high-five, um, and that cat got adopted shortly after that picture went up our face.
I wonder why.
Right, absolutely, right. Um, and of course, the new facility provides more adequate space for us to be able to train, making our animals more adaptable.
Oh, jeez, I've rained on it. I'm sorry, Tony. I rained on your thunder a little bit.
No problem.
Didn't know all this was...
Um, so the new design, the facility is designed to be less stressful on our animals, making them more adaptable, um, and it really, um, helps us to provide enrichment for our animals also, because we do have the space. Our cat room's obviously awesome, because our cats seriously are flying out the doors. We are having a hard time, we have maybe thirty cats in the shelter right now.
Wow.
Which is great, but kitten season coming, so.
Yeah, right.
I know that. Um, so, um, of course, those numbers are gonna go up, but even with kitten season last year, we did an awesome job of getting all those kittens adopted out with very little after-harsh.
You, you have, there, I, I walked through there last week. There's no way you have thirty cats. You have less than thirty cats.
Um, well, there's something quarantined in ISO that you probably didn't see.
They first come in, they go into quarantine?
Yeah, there, there was probably, uh...
I thought I, uh, those cats, uh, the cat rooms, I, I think you had maybe half a dozen cats.
Right, and right now, um, I have probably, what, three cat rooms? We don't have any cats in right now.
Right.
Which is awesome.
It's pretty cool.
Always good.
That's common, isn't it, just the big?
It does go up and down, especially after the first of the year, it's usually a slow time for dogs and cats, and we're seeing that right now, but it takes right back up.
Yeah.
A little back long, so, but we're ready for it, so.
March.
Looking for another cat?
Yeah, April.
I think Jim needs another one.
I think Jim needs another one.
No, no, Jim don't. He's in the market.
Well, you're in the market for a dog.
Yes, well, not you, no.
Not yet. We got a dog.
She's had her floors fixed.
Best time to get a puppy.
Yeah.
Okay, so we do provide the enrichment for our dogs. The cat rooms obviously provide that in itself, but we're also doing training with our cats as well as our dogs. So, um, our euthanated rates have also dropped significantly.
Can I just say one more thing about the new facility? I just remember going into the old one, and, I mean, it was hard to stay in there. Because it was so loud, and it didn't smell very good, and it was not...
You're being kind.
I mean, you walked out of there with the shakes.
Yes, um, I remember times before, I took this job long ago, when I walked in there, walked right back out, so.
And, and you're accustomed to that kind of thing.
Yes, I am.
For just the general public.
It's very daunting.
Can actually get to know the dog a little bit in a peaceful situation.
It is, it's just a more pleasant.
Yeah.
Atmosphere all the way around, so. So our euthanated rates went from forty in two thousand sixteen to twenty-five in two thousand eighteen, um, maintaining our no pill status, which means we have to have less, um, less than ten percent, um, euthanized. So we are well below that, at two point eight percent. That is the best number we've ever seen at the shelter for our euthan, euthanized rate. Um, and we attribute that to, um, our seven-day quarantine on animals coming into the shelter. We're very strict with that. We never, um, stray from, you know, stray from that. We always want those animals to be quarantined for seven days, so we can determine whether or not they're sick. If they are, they go to our ISO, if they're not, they go into our main area. Another one of the reasons is our strict cleaning protocol. Um, we have standard operating procedures in place for our dog and cat handlers to follow as far as cleaning procedures. Um, they are following them, it keeps our disease down. What do we have in ISO right now?
Which one?
Dogs and cats.
I have two in dog ISO for minor gastrointestinal issues, and I have one cat in our cat ISO, because she's in heat, we don't want her to drive the other cats insane.
Isolation has a dual propensity, so.
For cats.
For cats.
For cats.
The, the rates are down, too, because we do limit public interaction with our animals to just the serious adopters. Um, we don't want people just come in to pet the animals or just play with the animals. We want that to be, the people coming in to be serious about adopting.
But you know, if I may, you know, I, I've had some people over the years that, you know, that complained about that, and, and it's understandable, but they, they have to understand, if we were just to open those doors and let just people walk through there, we're gonna need more staff.
Yes.
That's, you know, it's a larger budget.
And we would have more diseases.
Yeah.
We absolutely would.
I, I, I mean, you, you hit the nail on the head in that we're in the business of adoptions.
Right.
We're not a zoo.
Exactly. We're not a petting zoo, and I say that all the time, so. Okay, so our staff is also spending more time socializing the animals and modifying behavioral issues, um, which also makes the animals more adaptable. So we have, we have seriously probably saved at least five or six dogs this year alone, um, with behavior issues that we normally would've had to euthanize, but because the staff is doing such an awesome job working with them, we have not had to do that. And they've become animals that we can adopt out to the public and not have to worry about them being safe. Average length of stay, um, and this is kind of awesome, too. Um, two thousand sixteen, our average length of stay for an animal was sixty-seven days, which is more than two months. Um, right now, the average length of stay is forty-seven days, which is a huge drop. Doesn't mean a lot to us, but it certainly means a lot to those animals, okay? Um, so we reduced that by twenty days. Um, for dogs, our average length of stay really didn't, well, went down a few, or went up a few days, but I do attribute that to the fact that we are spending more time training and working with them, so they do spend a little bit more time with us for us to accomplish something. With our cats, our average length of stay to concede dropped dramatically from a hundred, a hundred and fourteen days to sixty-six days.
Wow.
And that is definitely attributed to the animals.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, our, our volunteers and or staff socializing the animals certainly helps, too, so. And, you know, our cat rooms, they're just awesome. People come in and they love our cat rooms. I've had people have to come into a dog and say, is this cat gonna be okay at my house? Because I don't have that stuff in my house to reach cats to climb on, okay? So that's awesome. They're concerned that the cat's gonna be happier at the shelter than it will be in their home. Never heard that before.
Definitely. Definitely.
Okay? Okay. Our financials, because of the fact that we're doing a better job with getting animals out, I think we're spending less money doing it. Obviously, we're spending more money because of our new shelter and it's bigger and we have more people, but I think we're also coming in under budget in a lot of areas because we are doing such a good job of keeping the animals healthier and that type of thing. So we came in 9.4% under budget overall spending, and our variable costs came in 17.4% under budget, okay? And that's hourly, other supplies, household bedding, various services, that type of We've achieved this through doing more work with the animals and also working with the ACOs as far as having them and our volunteers working with the animals more, hourly wages for fedrigers, because we're using those guys who want. Vet services, obviously those are lower too, because of our quarantine procedures and our cleaning protocols and the shelter's design that is giving us the ability to quarantine and isolate the animals. Okay, we do like to be accountable and transparent. We do embrace the responsibility of being both of those to our stakeholders, and it is our goal to be the model of transparency for other animals like in agencies. I believe, or check this out, that we are the only shelter that gives an annual report to the public. Is that not right?
We semi-ent, we're semi-ent.
Semi-ent.
We've been doing that four years.
Yeah. So we're making all of our numbers available to pretty much anybody who wants to see them.
Good.
Even Chester, too?
Even Chester.
Right.
All they have to do is look. No kill reporting also, you know, we again are one of the only shelters that we know of that makes it obvious to everybody what our no kill numbers are. And we are doing a great job of staying under that number. Our new website is awesome. It came out in 2018, August, okay? And we, I think it's just huge help as far as giving the information to the people about what we do at the shelter. Provides a lot of information for animal control, how to bring in a stray, what to do if you find a dog or a cat, and just all over good information. And in August of 2018, we provided our municipal partners with the new compensation methodology, which occurred. And that's all data-driven on the numbers that we use to also put out our annual report. And again, we're trying to be transparent so they know what they're paying for, so. And beginning with this annual report, it's our intention to provide an annual report every year to our stakeholders.
I think that'll help, you know, a lot with them understanding what...
Yes, I agree.
What exactly we're doing here. You have to read it, though. Yeah, you have to read it.
Okay, that's the word. So we're kind of going into the next...
Consistent with what's up there on the screen right now, Tony and I have been working with this Pet Point management system, which is kind of the database of animals that we've been producing, the reports that we've been producing. And it's taken us five years to really get that system cleaned up. I mean, five years ago, when I first walked into it and the animal inventory, I showed that there were like 4,000 animals at the old shelter.
I was going to mention that.
So we had to go through, clean, admire it. And now we're at the point where what we're doing is very good and in very good shape. Now, what we want to do, though, is expand on our, number one, especially when it comes to animal control. Currently, we get reporting from two different places. 911 for case dispatches for requests for animal control, which tells us, an officer is dispatched, but doesn't tell us what happened. Then we have the animal control logs in the shelter, which are manually kept. Pet Point has as part of the system a case management module that basically we can use for animal control to track all calls, everything that they do, and will allow us to follow an animal from the moment it's reported as lost or stray, all the way through to the outcome, which will give us much better reporting for Tony to monitor the animal control officers and for us to report to the municipalities when it comes time and tell them, this is what we're doing and we're looking for more in-depth data. The other thing is we'll be able to, Tony, we'll be able to move to going pretty close to paperless, because we can upload forms to each animal on their, where she's not going to have to generate 900 paper files every, kind of thing. It also, and I know this doesn't sound really important, but it is really important. Currently, we're on their free system, and if you have a question, you have to submit a request to answer your question, and sometimes it'll take a day or two to get back. Well, this gives us access to them. Tony has it in your budget. He's $2,500 a year to upgrade. And probably a little bit later this year, we're going to request some training from them, which again, I think, you said it's maybe a transfer, we can cover the cost of that training, but have them come out here and teach us, because at this point in time, we don't know what we don't know. And by making that investment now, it's going to give us a jumpstart with our goal of being January 9 of next year, having all of these monitors in place, working right and correctly. So what we're asking you today is to approve this new agreement with Pet Point to upgrade to what they call their enterprise level, which would include everything that we talked about in its current production.
Any comments?
How long is the contract for? Is it an annual contract?
In perpetuity, basically, until we decide...
But it's $2,500 for one year.
Yeah, it's a one-year, yeah. It's $2,500 a year.
Okay.
Well, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to accept the 2018 annual report.
Second.
My congratulations. Thank you for the year.
So we have a motion and a second for acceptance of the 2018 annual report for the Porter County Animal Shelter. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Now we're going to talk about, let's talk about the Pet Point agreement. I think with, I think with the relationship we have in the county with all of our other stakeholders, the cities and towns, and I think that when we, I think we all remember when we were trying to build the shelter, there were certain communities, we were having a really hard time getting data out of as far as intakes and other things, because we were trying to size the type of shelter we needed. And so based on the arrangement, the agreements we have with all of our towns and cities and our stakeholders, I think that everything that we do is based off data. And so I think this is probably the final piece of that to make sure that we are keeping good records for our stakeholders. And if they ever want to have any questions or want to ask us anything, we can get that information readily, quickly. So I think just from that standpoint, I think this is probably a good move to go towards. So that would just be my thoughts.
I agree. Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the Pet Point Application Service Provider Agreement for one year. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, everybody out there for completing the loop.
Will the cities and towns get a copy of the annual report?
Yes.
I'd like them to know that their money has been well spent.
Yeah, send them out, yes. That's, yes. That's an absolute. Are you going to also post that on the animal shelter's website? Already there. What about the counties? Well, it's not been accepted yet. Gotcha. Thank you, Kurt. It was a draft, I know. I'm just, we just want to make sure we get it out there so the public can read it, so...
Just guessing, just to hear it twice.
Yeah.
He's a lucky man.
At least it's good news, other than hearing bad news.
So thank you. And thanks, everybody out there, too. It's been a real team effort. Good outcomes. Next up, we have IT Don Welson. We got an agreement here for Video Tech. And what's this for, Don?
I've got two of them for Video Tech. The first one is the animal shelter. Currently, they have ISS maintaining their access control, and we would like to change that to Video Tech. Would be a savings of $2,040 a year for the animal shelter. We do that.
There's your software.
Yeah, right. We have to do these separate, because one's a jail and one's animal controls.
Motion to approve, switching to Video Tech for the animal shelter's access control system.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an agreement with Video Tech to replace the animal shelter's access control system. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Next up?
The next one's a contract for Video Tech. Their access control system went out of warranty on December 31st, and this is a contract to get that support.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Video Tech, again, a preventative maintenance agreement for the jail. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thanks, Don. Welcome back. Facilities, market. I think Chris is going to come up.
Hi, Chris.
Chris is acting and... We will also be, in the next several weeks, we will be announcing the replacement of the building's facilities director. We've made an offer. They've accepted, and they'll be coming to work here within the next several weeks. And at that point in time, we'll be announcing who it is and probably be bringing him in there so everybody can get eyes on the new guy. So we're excited about that. Also want to thank Chris here, who, over the last 45 days, has taken a lot of this on her back when it's really not her job. And I just want to tell you how much I'm thankful for you being up there and sort of sorting through all of the stuff that goes on here every day. So thank you.
You're welcome.
So what we have here now is we have a Martin security system, and this is a monitoring agreement for the 157 Franklin Building for the 4D space.
Right.
And we, over the cold weather, we had a, we had a small leak, which then turned into a lot of other problems that dripped on, it just happened to drip on our monitoring system.
Yes.
So a lot wasn't in our favor, but that, out of all the cold stuff that we happened over the polar vortex cold, this was very minimal. We were fortunate. And that again was because the guys were out there checking all the buildings and making sure everything was doing what it should have been doing. So we're very thankful for that. So this is a monitoring agreement for that space, you know, as long as they're there.
Do we need to do these separate?
You don't have to.
We don't have to. And then the other one is for the security. One is for fire, and one is for security. So they have a security system there as well, too.
Motion to approve the fire and security monit, monitoring agreements for 157 Franklin Street.
Second. We have a motion and a second for Martin Security Systems for monitoring agreements for fire and security at 157 Franklin Street, the 4D space. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Should be able to breathe pretty soon.
Yeah. Hello?
Hello.
The floor is yours, sir.
First item we have up from department is the approval of the engineering drawing packet and specifications that are going out for sealed bids. You see, for Bridge 126, I should mention, this is 700 North over Salt Creek. This is being advertised now, and what we have is a little page here, if you guys can sign it, and have Vicki attest it and everything like that, is going to go out to the actual approved drawings. The drawings were gone over thoroughly by NASS, along with the specification package, and we are hoping to open sealed bids at the next commissioners' meetings. So this is approval for going forward with the advertising.
So now the path to start upgrading our bridges has started.
It has.
So here we go.
This is our first one.
Yep. So get ready for more, folks. There's more going to be coming through here. So we have a lot of bridge work to do out there.
Do we need a motion?
Next month.
What would the motion look like?
Bridge 135, to approve the advertisement.
Motion to approve the advertisement for sealed bids for Bridge 126.
Second. We have a motion and a second for the approval to advertise for sealed bids for Bridge 126. This is 700 North over Salt Creek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
Bob, real quick, when we go to actually get into the construction of it, will that road be closed completely?
Yes.
Okay.
This is a capital improvement bridge? This is a capital improvement bridge.
Oh, so this is one was on the, yeah, that's right, 126. I'm getting that one and the other one confused. That may be a great place for the first use of one of those messages that's signed. Yep.
Yes, we agree. We'll get them months.
And then next, what do we got next?
Now we're asked to do to approve what's going forward with the advertisements, again, or announcing that we're going to be seeking advertisements for Bridge 135. Bridge 135 is Old Porter Road over Salt Creek. This is up in the city of Portage, right on the Portage and Versa City Line. This is the one that we have as Structure Point to expedite because of the fact that we had to close the road and the bridge last week or two weeks ago.
Motion to approve seeking for sealed bids for Bridge 135.
Second. We have a motion and a second for approval to seek sealed bids for Bridge 135. This is Old Porter Road over Salt Creek. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.
And that bridge is up, we've already closed that road.
We have, we have closed that road.
And, you know, just for the media's sake, because there was unfortunately a Facebook post by the Portage Police Chief in regard to the condition of that bridge, in that the commissioners have been well aware of the condition of this bridge since going back as far as 2016. It's been on a schedule to be replaced. We don't know if it's partially due to the harsh weather that we've had this winter, but its deterioration has accelerated. We have asked for an emergency permit from the DNR, so we're moving as quickly as we can to get that repaired.
Army Corps permit came in yesterday.
Oh, good.
So they did expedite that for us, so that's great.
And I've been working with Structure Point, and they have been very responsive. They're moving this quickly, so I'm happy with their progress.
But it was due, it was due to your office, I mean, it was our inspection, our determination, which eventually decided to close that.
Yes.
It wasn't something that some neighbor called us and said, "Hey, you may want to get out there, the bridge is collapsing, close it." You don't have to respond, I'm being facetious.
Okay.
I mean, the bottom line, it's been on our radar, why, it's part of the Capital Improvement Plan.
Another one that was, when we, if you saw, showed all the pictures a year and a half ago when we did the Capital Improvement Plan, so this was...
And the reason why we're at the point we're at now, that we can, that we are, that we are at a point that we can expedite, is because this has been in the meat grinder since the Capital Improvement Plan was approved.
Correct. One of the things I'd like to point out, too, for the public, is you've noticed both these bridges go over Salt Creek. Because that's a tributary, the amount of time that we have to work in that area and the regulation and restrictions that we have to work when we work over Salt Creek... the regulation and restrictions that we have to work when we work over Salt Creek, it's a lot of oversight and a lot of permitting. And that's sort of what slows up some of this stuff sometimes too. So sometimes when you see a bridge get done and engineered and built right away, and then you see one that takes a long time to do, that's what the difference is, is you're going through different permitting bodies of the federal government, either be the DNR or, you know, all, all the multiple ones that we have to deal with. We also have to deal with them too at a, at a government level as well. So these two bridges were in Salt Creek, so they had a lot of, lot of time and a lot of permitting that we had to work through. And then there's also a lot of requirements when we work on the bridge that we have to make sure that we don't do anything to disturb the creek and the wildlife and the habitat that's there too. So it's just part of the process. It's part of the meat grinder that we have to go through, but it's good to see that these are, these are real close to getting going.
Have we, have we heard back from, received a work order from the cable company that's running lines across the frontier?
We have not. We have had our consultant, Structure Point, corresponding with them, and they have requested an emergency move. So we have not yet heard back, but they're in that process of coordinating that.
Is there, Scott, is there anything that the commissioners can do to help move that along? I mean, they, this has been going on how long?
Yeah, about a year.
Now, that's ridiculous.
Quite an emergency.
Yeah.
And they're lying attached to the bridge on that material which being, we were concerned.
So maybe a letter from, from the county attorney? I'll be happy to write one.
Okay.
Because we can't, I mean, that, that road is a, is a major road up there as far as use goes, and I can't be close any more than it absolutely has to be.
They have not responded to Structure Point. They've had the utility coordination and they have exceeded the requirement under state law by two months, three months?
Yes, on the order of months.
I think probably the most effective part will be the fact that we're talking about it in a public meeting with the press here, that we're trying to fix a bridge, that we've had to close the road, and now we are in the process of trying to make it go as fast as possible. And one of the slowdowns at this point is we can't get one of our local utility providers to respond to us in a timely manner. That's probably the most effective way of handling it. But a letter from commissioner's office can also go out in the next day or two to
I'll go with you, Scott.
Make the point.
Don't drop anything on the line though.
But I, I, you know, I would like to be contacted when we finally hear back from them.
Sure. Absolutely.
I mean, that's, that's, trying to reach them for a year now, that is absolutely ridiculous.
Mm-hmm.
And again, I, you know, regardless of what we're doing on our end, if they, if they're not cooperating, it doesn't matter how quickly or to just, you know, we move along with this.
True.
We can't do anything until they detach. Or, or the bridge continues to deteriorate and the line breaks and then we're back to square one. But we'll have everybody's attention at that point. Or we just go out there and cut the cables. Right, Bob?
No?
Good thing our attorney wouldn't like to have it.
We're not going to cut any cables.
Yeah, I, I got, I got nothing on that one. I know how to do it.
Things happen, you know, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
But it's attached to the bridge and the bridge is in bad shape.
Bridge is, yeah.
So it doesn't take.
The end of the wire.
You must figure out what will happen if anything falls.
Right.
Next up, we got our community crossings grant application for 2019. I know some of you that have been in here, the press, that have watched us cover our community crossings grant. We've come a long way on getting our stuff together and getting ahead of it a little bit more. This is a result of that. So now you actually have on our agenda the roads that we're going to be submitting to the state for our grants. So everybody knows now what roads we've targeted and what roads we want to submit. And I think this submittal is what, end of March?
Um, we already.
No, it's already submitted.
We already have the application.
They let us know end of March.
Right. They totally changed the procedure with community crossings this year. What you're looking at here is $2 million worth of work. Matt has been working with Rich Sexton on this. What we're requesting, this is essentially the announcement that we're going to be sending out invitations to bid on this work here. These applications are in the community crossings. Community crossings has changed it where in the past, we've been able to use the annual bid process that the commissioners opened with the, as all work with highway department. Now we have to individually bid each one of these projects going forward.
Oh, wow.
So.
And that's in order to, but it's in order to make sure the work gets done in the calendar year. Is that what it's boiling down to? And it's to make sure that the money is, the community crossings money is spread around the local contractors.
Correct. And, yes.
And comply with Indiana code.
Right. I mean, it's going underneath procurement law that they were requesting that we follow as far as individual sealed bids for these projects.
And how much did we get from community crossings grant last year for the county?
Eight, approximately $870,000 on that. To give you an update on that, I have submitted in to, in that, all of the necessary paperwork to hopefully open up a P.O. this summer so that way we can start to get the money in and then spend on talks.
And we have other roads, just to be clarified for the general public, this is not, these are not the only roads that's going to get attention this summer, or spring.
Correct.
So these are just the ones under the community crossings grant.
Yeah, Rich and Jim have been working on an extensive chip and seal project.
Right.
We're also crack sealing. So we're going to do over 100 miles of pavement preservation, and Rich can talk about that more if you'd like.
Well, I'd just like to make, you know, I met with Matt and, and Bob yesterday for several hours. And, you know, just as we talked about the animal shelter and all the good outcomes here, I think what you're going to see over the next couple of years with the highway department and a lot of the things that we're going to be doing, and then with the addition of Matt having engineering oversight over a lot of these things, I'm very impressed with the direction that we're heading. And I think what we need to be better stewards of, you know, we only have a certain pot of money every year that we can spend for paving and upgrading our roads. I think this approach is going to allow us to make these roads last longer by the methods, the type of materials that, that we're going to be heading into. So I know I'm very excited. I know we have 816 miles to take care of, and I know this is the first part of that start. But I know deep down, I'm, I'm very happy with the direction that this department is finally going. And I think the people are going to see it over the next couple of years. I think they've seen it to date, but what we have in store for everybody in the county is going to be really, you know, the equipment that we've invested in and the training and the guys and what we're doing is, I'm, I'm excited about this because one thing the county government does do is the roads is a very, very, it's really one of the backbones of what we do here as well as 911 and some of the other things. But our roads, we need to, they're, they're being traveled on a lot more. I mean, you guys just can't believe the traffic counts that we're having on some of our counties. Some of our county roads are averaging eight to 9,000 cars a day on these county roads. And I mean, that's, that's a lot of traffic for a county road. And so I'm, I'm just tickled to death that the direction that we're heading here. And I think we're going to be able to get longer, longer life out of these roads and better drainage and which just, it's all part of a quality of life and everything else. Roads are important, good roads are important. So thank you, guys. I know we got a long way to go. There's going to be a lot more meetings, but we're, we're going in the right direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
We probably need to, we need to do a motion and a second for this list.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the community crossings grant matching grant for 2019. This is approval to seek sealed bids for the following projects as noted on the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, last on the list, we have wildlife management. These are requests. Scott, you want to give us a breakdown because I think we can, or a setup for this? We can do this all in once, right?
We can. These are, this is to the commissioner's portion of the approval to approve the additional appropriations into the individual funds so that the zonal wildlife can put on their yearly event. This is the first step. And then tonight, they're on the council agenda for approval by the council. And then that would allow the funds to be additional and appropriated in the right different lines so they could put on their event.
Okay.
And this is money that's their donation.
This is all their, this is the money that they've worked really hard to raise and get donations and, so yes, this is the fruits of all of their labor.
They just want access to it. Yep.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second for several, seven requests for additional appropriations from Fund 4906 Wildlife Management Donation Fund. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. Last up, we have one thing that we've added to the agenda. Nothing, nothing crazy, but we have a job description.
Yeah, it's been added, I believe, to the council agenda tonight. They've got some issues that they'll be dealing with, with the prosecutor's office. But this is to clean up the executive administrative assistant job description within the prosecutor's office. HR has reviewed this and gone through it. It's all updated to current work duties and also updates the status of making this position exempted.
Yep.
A motion to approve the new job description for executive administrative assistant in the prosecutor's office.
Second. We have a motion and a second for an upgraded approval of a job description for the executive administrative assistant for the prosecutor's office. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, motion carries. And that concludes our meeting. Is there anybody wishing to address this board?
Could I ask you if I could date a that exempt status?
After council approval tonight?
Tonight?
And it's 4106. Wildlife Management Donation Fund, it's 4106, not 4106.
Oh.
I'll amend my motion to refund 4106.
And I'll second that amendment.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign, motion carries again. And that concludes our meeting. So thank you for everybody for showing up, and this meeting stands in recess.